All right, so you want to...
I didn't do that.
Sorry. Don't kill the town plan.
Oh, no, no.
All right, so you're gonna be making a presentation on 186 Meadowbrook?
Yeah, although we'd like to just give a little background. I think we're interested in dialogue with the planning board tonight. Paul Seck?
Yeah. It has... Have the plans changed at all from the site walk?
The house, they reduced the house by about eight hundred. But they were thinking, they started working on that. We haven't incorporated that into sections and into the site plan because the more they looked at it, let's meet with the planning board and discuss the site. You know, the planning board has concerns. Express what we're hoping to do, but very interested in that input from the planning board tonight.
Well, my input is, this is a house that is currently a viable residence. It's not a two connoisseur. It's a viable residence. The proposal is to replace it with another residence. But any residence that you replace it with is going to be in serious violation of the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. And under what theory could we, as the planning board, sign off on that? We know that it's going to be in serious violation-
But less sold than what's there. I was gonna say, the existing structure is in serious violation.
It's a pre-existing structure. You're proposing a new structure.
You haven't been in the house, so I would love for you to go walk through the house.
Are we gonna argue about it?
No.
What is livable or not livable?
Well, I was gonna discuss it. The historical commission has looked at this and they heard the outside discussed, also the inside photographed, and they decided there was no significance to this house.
It's not a matter of historical significance. It encroaches a new house that's gonna encroach seriously in a setback.
Less sold than the present house though. Less so.
But that's-
The present house is, this is pushed back in both sides.
I don't know what you mean by less so. It's a larger house.
But if the setbacks are the issue, this is further back in the road.
But it's encroaching for a further distance.
That's right. And you have the garage too. How about the garage?
And they're more informed by absorbing the garage into the-
I don't wanna argue about it. I mean, this is the issue that we're facing. And I just, this is, as we said at the site walk, this is a brand-new experience for the planning board. This is a non-conforming lot with a building that can't even come close to being, a new building that can't come close to being conforming. And under what theory are we reviewing this, as though this is by right construction? Under what theory?
The only jurisdictional question here is whether this is a single-family residence district, which it is, a new house proposed, which requires, because it's over 10 percent, needs your review. The alternative, they could bypass you altogether and propose in front of the Board of Appeals to triple the size, as long as they kept half the walls. So it's a jurisdictional question.
I agree, but I don't think-
Because, but my point is, this board doesn't have authority to say, "We're not going to consider this" because it's a non-conforming structure. I'm not aware of anything that says, "Because it's a non-conforming new house, you're not even going to consider it."
But under what circumstances could we possibly impose mitigations on something that we know from the start is non-conforming and arguably more non-conforming than the existing house?
So, because you have, it's a legal lot in Weston. It's on a street with tremendously large-
When you say a legal lot, it's a non-conforming lot.
It's a legal lot.
It's pre-existing non-conforming.
Which makes it legal. It was legal when created, like several other lots.
There's a pre-existing house lot, but you're suggesting a new structure.
That's correct.
That sort of resets that. I mean, you lose the structure. You're right, if you leave the walls and you expand it that way, you know, the trajectory going down is correct.
Wouldn't have been before you-
No, you don't lose the protection of a pre-existing non-conforming lot unless you discontinue the use for at least a year. Or is it two years? It's two years, one year fire, two years, and you just don't use it for two years. It's a legal house lot. But yes, they need, they don't even need a variance for this. They need a special permit. But that's the Board of Appeals' purview. Yours is to look at the standards-
I beg your pardon, but we will be making a recommendation out to the zoning Board of Appeals. And I'd like to know, under what circumstances you imagine we would give a positive recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals?
That's why we're looking for dialogue tonight. What you're saying is, any new house, because it's on a non-conforming lot, you could never make a positive recommendation?
I didn't say that.
I'm trying to understand.
Well, you're, in this case, you're over by a considerable amount with a new proposed house, considerably over the setback lines.
Yeah, it's a very small envelope because it's a long, narrow, so they've tried to design a long, narrow house. But yes-
I was so shocked to see this. Most of us, I think, we'd never seen, I thought you'd be going to the ZBA first.
No, we would have to go first.
We would prefer to go to the ZBA.
Well, you just, you know, you just said that- It would be a zoning violation almost for us to actually say it's just fine.
But you just said you have never seen anything like this, so maybe we should have both boards here at the same time, since this is a special instance or circumstance. So why are we talking to you when you say we should be talking to them and they say we should be talking to you?
That's when the zoning bylaw, and I don't think people saw this change coming. When we changed site, when we signed a finding with the Board of Appeals a couple of years ago to a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming lots, at least I didn't realize that the end result was, a project like this, instead of going to the Board of Appeals first, which is, makes, to me, has always made more sense. It costs a lot less money. We have to come to you first.
But, see, this is, the problem with that is, we went the other route before on the house on Newton Street. And the problem with that is, it gets the zoning Board of Appeals into site plan review.
Right, which is-
Which is, and by the way, if you drive by that house on Newton Street, every time I drive by it, I wonder what happened because it's just sitting there with no, essentially no landscaping. This is, the issue is that we're charged with conducting site plan review. Putting the cart before the horse in the form of the zoning Board of Appeals puts the zoning Board of Appeals in the position of conducting site plan review, which is where they shouldn't, what they shouldn't be doing. So, you know, it's, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
I understand why this board say that it would make sense that you'd like the input on what's happening in the site first, and that's why we're here.
But in this case, this is such a different story from anything we've actually ever looked at before that I can't personally imagine, under what circumstances, we could make a positive recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals if they agree to this.
Well, then we have, we have two choices then, I guess. One is, we go forward, you're saying, you know, there's no sense even listening because we can't give you a positive recommendation. Might as well go forward with what we have now, but the hope tonight was to tell you about the lot, tell you what they're hoping to do, and get your input.
But we did that at the site walk.
There's nothing written. There's nothing that was printed or sent or emailed. We have no idea what's going on.
They had about four meetings.
And we were-
Five.
They didn't see this coming.
We were led to believe, based on our four meetings, that we were going down the right path with regards to developing this, you know, the site.
One of our consultants is sitting right here. Would you concur with that?
I would not concur with that. I think we were very clear with you. First of all, we are not the planning board. We gave our recommendations for mitigation.
So you didn't have four meetings with us?
We had four meetings with you.
Yes, you did. There we go.
We gave recommendations for mitigation.
Excuse me.
If you're not gonna listen to me speak, then I'll just stop it.
Don't speak to each other, is my recommendation.
Lauren, would you like to interject?
Don't speak to each other.
You've all said that.
Oh, you don't want to talk to each other, okay.
Kim, would you talk to us about what your experience-
Sure. We had several meetings with them. David and I both understood this was probably going to be an issue. We made it very clear to the applicant that this was going to be an issue. We gave our recommendations as best we could for mitigation standards. You know that we do not have the jurisdiction to tell an applicant they cannot apply for this site plan review. We did the best we could to give them our recommendations for mitigation, and that's all we were able to do.
But you could tell us what tree the plant-
Oh, excuse me.
No, this, okay. They could tell us what tree the plant spent hours, have us redo the plant over and over and over again, telling us that we're going in the right direction. I thought planting on rhododendrons, on azaleas, on conifer trees, more horticulture than I ever cared to know about.
And truthfully-
But we did this at the meetings, going in the right direction, we talked. And then it was the final presentation to the board we're supposed to have.
And our team has been so accommodating. You know, we've never said, "No, we're not gonna do this. We can't do this," or "We can't do that." We've accommodated. We have all the revisions that we've made. And to what end? To being told that, "I don't like it," based on each other, or based on if we had facts-
What I'm trying to do is save you more time. We could send you scurrying back to redraw plans and do less.
It's what we can do.
That's what we wanted four months ago. We wanted this four months ago.
If the bottom, what I'm saying to you is that, and I'm speaking for myself, you know, other board members can agree with me or not, but you can plant the daylights out of it. You can do whatever you like. My recommendation is gonna be, to the zoning Board of Appeals, don't grant it. If you want, if they wanna put an addition on the house, put an addition on the house, but, and find it not more detrimental, but don't replace it with a brand-new structure and ask us to sign off on it. At least, that's my opinion.
That's great. I wish we'd heard that four months ago. What we heard was a totally different story from people that are supposed to report back to you and give us proper advice. We didn't get that. We went down the wrong path for four months. Money, time, effort.
I would absolutely like to hear from the town plan.
Yes, a couple ways. One, right from the get-go, when the driveway came across in front of the house-
We don't care. Kick the driveway away. We'll do it from the other side.
Excuse me.
We would have done it. We would have changed it.
Excuse me. We're gonna speak to one person at a time. Is that all right?
We had said that that is gonna be a huge pill for the board to swallow. You change the configuration. We spent time as far as, look, we don't think this is gonna work, but if you need it to work, you need to landscape the heck out of it because it needs to become invisible. We spent a lot of time on lighting and landscaping and all that, location of the septic, to encourage you to work more with the development with the property. And even last Thursday, I wrote an email to your architect and engineer saying, "Well, I appreciate the fact that you have reduced the overall width of the house and reduced the RGFA by over 800 feet, square feet. I'm concerned that the revisions to the structure do not reflect the board's comments at the site walk." The board commented that the proposed house essentially required a level building site, and there was no accommodation for the existing property of the site. If this plan is what you and your client want to discuss on Tuesday, then you will need to really demonstrate why the layout works and why a driveway crossing in front of the house makes the most sense. By way of this email forwarding David and Kim the plan so they are aware of the scope of the revisions, this is where you basically just change the footprint.
But what I would agree with the owners is that this is not a dialogue. You're engaging in a dialogue as if this were a conforming lot with a conforming building, and if you make this change, you make that change, the board might feel better about it. And I would suggest, I mean, respectfully, that that is probably not, that's probably not an effective message because they're not hearing what the board has been, was saying to them on the site walk. They're hearing, "If you tweak this and you change that, that things are gonna be okay." And I have a more basic philosophical issue with what is being proposed here than whether they plant taller or more trees, or whether the driveway's on one side or the other. And I don't know, again, I'm just speaking for myself, but that's where I'm coming from. And I think that's what shot them at the site walk, that they didn't expect that. They thought this was going to be more trade-offs, and if there were a sufficient number of trade-offs, that the board might be induced to say, "Okay," to the project.
And it's been months of this, as well as revenue being spent on this, as well as time, it's dwindled away. And we've gotten, and imagine our shock when you came there and said, "I don't like it," where-
It's not that, it's, for me, it's not whether we like it or not. It's the idea that, you know, this is a new building on a lot that's non-conforming with respect to the building envelope, where we just basically throw the dimensional regulations out the window.
I have a question about, a precedent-type question, Al. If you take it to the extreme, I'm assuming you're not saying it's the fact that it's a new house, the fact that it's bigger, or are you saying that if you knock this house down, if you take it to the extreme, put the exact same size house, you would still say, "No, because now it's a new house. We're automatically gonna recommend against that?"
I would say that if they were, if they built a new house on the same footprint, that at least there'd be more of a case to be made to begin to mitigate that. Well, I can disagree all you want to. You're sitting over there and we're sitting over here.
Listen, I'm listening very clear.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Peter, excuse me.
Yeah, Peter Gammy. I'm sorry. We have Peter Gammy here, who's the engineer.
And I think you identified, really, where the frustration is, is that they were led, or believed, led, not intentionally, but to believe that they could build something, and if they did this, they would be driving that. And they spent thousands, thousands of dollars, thinking they were getting there to be, suddenly, with a basic premise that you're telling us, and I'm trying to understand it completely, if you, you can build nothing there if you take that house down.
You could actually use the same building footprint. That's by the way-
Where is that written and how is that established?
This is a special-
And this comes into why I don't like being the zoning board of appeals. And this is where it all comes back. You know, this is a non-conforming lot. The house is non-conforming. And now you wanna do this other thing, and it's like, if you really, really have to have a new house, to me, if I were on the zoning board of appeals, I would say, "Wow, this is the world's narrowest lot. It'll have a huge impact on this roadway, this very beautiful roadway, if you knock this down and you put up this very big house. If you knock it down and you put up an exact same house on the same footprint, maybe we'll let you do it. Maybe. Or maybe we'll make you conform to the existing setbacks." So that's my deal.
I think the important thing, two things. Number one, the people that are living in the house, us and our neighbors, those are the two people, the three people that would be most affected.
Oh, you're so wrong. If the whole town's open, don't you go there.
The whole town of Weston will do very well. We want, we've done this before. We've done very good-
It would be a betterment.
Yeah, it would be a betterment to go and that site. There's no doubt about it. What's there now is not.
Financially, it's a betterment. You have more access.
There's a system there that's failing. It's too close to wetlands. We're changing things.
You're looking at your own program, but we're looking at the-
But how about wetlands in the town of Weston?
We're looking at a broader picture, that this is, this sets, this, to my mind, this would establish a precedent, that it's okay to ignore the dimensional regulations of the town under particular circumstances without defining what those circumstances are. So nature us, with the next people that wanna do something wonderful by their lights, coming before us and saying, "Well, you gave those guys, you let those guys do it." And there is no, there's no reasonable answer for that. And that is, and that is where I'm coming from. I don't want to establish that as something that we could tweak around the edges or fool with. I wanna make it crystal clear that the dimensional regulations in the town are there for a reason, and they were established for a reason. And I'm damned if I'm going to just say, "Forget about 'em" because somebody wants to build what they believe is a better-looking house. And they very well be a better-looking house.
So you're consigning all of it, and there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots in town. So your goal is to consign all those lots to the existing houses on those lots?
No, in many cases, no, in many cases, those non-conforming lots actually have viable building envelopes in them. And that in and of itself is a difficult decision. But I take, for example, the non-conforming lot, again, going back to the first one that came down the bike, which is on Newton Street, that one actually conform, that one's actually in the setbacks. There's one on, across from the-
That's a discipium.
Yeah.
They're able to squeeze it in the envelope.
In the envelope.
They designed it to work.
Yeah.
This might be the wrong house on the wrong block.
You should see the envelope.
There's one across-
The right housing.
This is, no.
But there is a house there right now.
There is.
Which doesn't-
But it doesn't matter. There is a house there right now, which works very well.
And it was built before the zoning bylaw.
So, I understand philosophically you're against it. I'm just saying legally, I think you're on shaky ground saying we're gonna deny it.
We're not, we didn't say we were gonna deny, did I use the word deny?
You're gonna deny it if it's any bigger.
Did I use the word deny?
What was the word? What's your word?
We will be making a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals as to whether to grant a special permit on this property. I know what the game is, and the zoning board of appeals will have to grant the special permit or not. The zoning board of appeals could choose to ignore our recommendation. They could choose to ignore it, in which case they could, they would issue the special permit. But my suspicion is that they probably won't ignore our recommendation. And our recommendation, at least my recommendation, would be, stay in the footprint. If you wanted to, stay to the original house and do an addition, but I can't recommend replacing it with a new house.
Did you perhaps take that? Go ahead. I put some numbers together. The homes you said are one acre or less on Meadowbrook Road, and the size of their home, as well as, now, there's been so many instances where egregious things have been done. For instance, on 25 Meadowbrook Road, it was a wooded lot. There was a home that was there. Some builder came, tore every tree down. I have pictures of it. The trees are being taken, carted away. It's an empty lot, completely unwooded now, and that's the home that's going up on it. That's at least a 65-foot, square foot home. And, you know, and I'm sure they'll add on and do whatever. We're not asking for, and they don't have enough frontage. So 250 in Zone A is what you need for frontage. They have 175. So they went for special permitting. I mean, people are playing all kinds of games to get around you all. We're not. We're asking for permission to put something up that is beautiful. We put two years of effort into designing this home based on the limitations of the lot. You really must take this into consideration.
You won't see it on the road. You will not see it on the road.
Our intention is to, you know, have it be a quiet home, not something that's an egregious, you know, outcry.
I think our neighbors will approve of a new house.
They'll be happy.
We could add on to an existing house, but it won't look right. We wanna do what's right.
Well, come in under RGFA. Come in under the trigger.
But we have a family of four children and of six people, and possibly one head cat. That's gonna be hard to do. So, we wanna stretch it as much as we can, but we don't wanna go overboard. We want your advice, your recommendations on what-
And we want your blessing because we're coming to you to say, you know, "Please tell us, you know, what would you like here?" And we want the neighbors to be happy. We want everyone to be happy. We want this to be a quiet property. When, you know, Joe mentioned that the lumens were too excessive, we immediately reduced the amount of lumens on the property by, and it's a very, you know, under-reckoned. We want that.
There are two issues. I mean, the one issue is, it seems to have been a lot of dialogue, which now appears to contradict where the board was winding up. There's several board members who haven't said anything yet, and it would be interesting to hear your comments at some point. But my feeling is, if you want my recommendation, my recommendation, stand with the existing footprint, add to the existing house, or come in under the RGFA trigger.
Wouldn't that look more detrimental to the lot, for the town of Weston, for the neighbors, as opposed to just doing something beautiful, nice, small, and having our neighbors-
I'm just saying, you asked, that would be my, those would be my suggestions.
You know, the town has imperfect bylaws, and we all know that, okay? We don't have a perfection law, so that you can buy a lot completely clear, and then come before us. That happens to be the way the laws are in this town, or bylaws, where you're imperfect. However, you're coming before us and asking us to approve something, and I know just what you're talking about. Boy, you're absolutely right, but just, I personally just can't say, "Yes, it's fine to completely ignore the dimensional setbacks." It just makes me shake.
The footprint that's there.
I'm not showing more fears.
The footprint that's there has been, excuse me, a conglomeration of add-ons. So it's not really adhering to any particular architectural form. It's not any type of home. I mean, it's not like we can say, "Okay, well, let's recreate, you know, a Fegelsstadt home," or a colonial, or even a Swedler. It has no architectural merit, and we initially tried to save it. We said, "Oh, my gosh, you know, we're gonna save this home." So we brought in, you know, reconstruction people to say, "Okay, what can we do to save it?" And they said, "Why are you saving this? This half of this house is tilting and falling. The other half is molded and the basin's got-"
Correct.
And there's some water issues. So this is when we started to think, "Okay, how can we make this a betterment so that everyone's happy? We're not in anybody's view, and we're not encroaching on anyone's, anything as far as their homes."
I think Al just gave us some wonderful advice.
Yes.
Several options, maybe.
Yes, the footprint, but the footprint is an imperfect footprint.
Right.
Of course. That's the whole challenge.
First of all, I would disagree that the house doesn't have any architectural merit. I think it's a very charming house that follows contours of a land, and it fits beautifully on the site. And that's often the way I judge a house, is how it fits on the site. So I don't think I would agree with that. But I don't know what you asked your architect to do, but I was gonna bring up the whole idea of the footprint. Because as an architect, knowing what a sensitive site is, and knowing the difficulty it is to build on a site, I would have at least started with the existing footprint, you know, accepting the fact that you don't want the house itself, and start with that footprint. Add, put additions onto the footprint as sensitively as I can, as much as I could within the allowed area. Keep the garage where it is, and at least start from there. You know, make it as small as possible, but still, you know, still meet your programmatic needs. And that's not what we've seen. When I look at the new house, and the new house, at least on the plans we have, don't have the setback outline. So it's very difficult to look at the new house and to believe what you're saying, which is that the new house actually goes, the footprint of the new house goes over or onto the setback area less than the old house, because I find that very hard to believe. So that's where I would have started, and I think that, you know, just adding upon what Al said, I think that that's what you could do.
And, you know, just to speak on what you're requesting with regards to keeping the garage there, one of the reasons we had decided to take it away was because we considered our neighbor. He's looking at a really old garage, and we thought, "Okay, let's make it a little bit more conforming." And here we are imposing a home onto a lot, so let's make it nice for everyone, on the left and on the right. So all of a sudden, his view becomes nicer.
Well, I understand that, and I imagine that there's room for tweaking, and certainly if it was a new garage, you could look the way I look now. But the idea of extending the driveway across the property starts to ruin the qualities of the property because, again, I think that you want a house sitting beautifully on the line.
But we're not doing that. You could put a driveway from the private road. Meadowbrook would not even have opened. You could do it off the private road. You wouldn't touch a tree in the front. Doesn't have to be done. But, you know, we just wanted this input three, four months ago. That's what the real sash part is.
I agree with that.
We've been so far in progress, yeah, yeah. That's what we wanted, and just, we're umpteen thousands of dollars in the hole, and now we finally have some guidance.
No, that's a, that's a, I'm sorry that that was the situation.
I'm a little hit. I can understand how I have, because, well, I'm sure there's a particular-
Well, also, we have to remember that we're, as a town, you know, we started off in the fall last year with a potential zoning bylaw to address how Gale-type cases occur. We don't have any town standards yet. We were looking for input from the ZBA, what they would approve. You know, we're sort of working through our methodology on how to handle similar properties because what would have required a variance a year ago now is a special permit. How lax, how restrictive the ZBA is handling those, you know, that's why we're grappling with the issue of how do we word recommendations to the ZBA. And, you know, the, this is sort of moving the town's position on how to address these lots and- And unfortunately, as relates to this property, it got messy.
One question, can you do synthesis of very unusual set of circumstances in both boards meet at the same time?
Well, I have some ideas about how we're going to, I don't know if it's a joint meeting or what.
Let's save money and effort.
I don't know if it's a joint meeting. I'm not sure if the zoning board of appeals would be up for that. But, but I have some thoughts about how we can keep, at least engage in some dialogue here. Because I don't want to have this, this train wreck happen over and over and over again. I can appreciate how painful it is to have to spend money and then absolutely hit us a brick wall. Believe me, I, 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 we all can feel that. So I don't want that to happen again.
We want the town western to benefit, the neighbors to benefit.
No, no, we appreciate your motives. It's, it's just that you picked the lulu of a lot.
But we, we love the view. We want to maximize it. We love the road. We love everything about it.
Proof one on site plan, proof on South Avenue last fall, that thing got turned down. Which is right near where Highland.
You know the one where it was shifted.
Three feet into the.
It was under the setback.
Well, that's what, that's part of the problem, that we weren't, the message that was communicated to us was different from the, from the decision that came down from the zoning board of appeals. And yet, a bylaw wasn't needed. I remember somebody telling me that. And, and to help at least start to clarify some of these issues. So as a result, we're getting train wreck after train wreck, which is a surprise.
Did you give that one an unfavorable or?
No. We were, we were told that the zoning board of appeals had a certain set of standards, which we had formed with, and then the ZBA turned them down.
It's a little embarrassing.
So this is what we're talking about. This is why we proposed a zoning bylaw change last fall. Because we could see this coming. And guess what? Here it is. And it would have helped, we thought, to at least have clarified for people in lack-ladder regulations what they might or might not expect.
Well, it sounds like even without getting it down in writing, like if this specific proposal was re-run by you, you would have said that basically your site was dead of water.
It's not, it, there is, okay. It's not, you think, stay within the same footprint?
No, but I mean, the proposal they were.
Oh, along the long house, yeah. I think that would have been the one they want.
That's the unfortunate thing, whether or not it's codified or not. It sounds like maybe there's some way to have communication, what's in the pipeline.
Yeah, right. Well, that's what I was sort of thinking, is that what you're doing.
That's where, that's where also, when the house.
It's a jump to the head of art.
When, when the house, when the house itself was not deemed being significant, was able to be torn down, and then with the recommendation that came out of historic, there was a lot of latitude in that. It didn't give an indication that this, you know, exact sort of linear house would be this much of an issue. So, you know.
But the, but the, the historical commission only opines on the significance of houses, not on, on the, on, they don't have the authority to actually opine on site plan issues. So the message from the commission would have been that this house may not rise to the level of historic significance, but that doesn't mean that, that you then have a completely free rein to do anything.
Right. But I mean, it's the same thing, like, you know, 18 Wesley, where historic provided some recommendations that were recommendations to the, to the board, or.
Different story. National Register District.
Right. But, you know, I forwarded the plans to historic so that if there was comments, that could be provided.
But 18 Wellesley's in the National Register District, that's a different kettle of fish. That's why, that's why the commission got way to head on that one.
So you heard it.
So it sounds like you're, you're throwing out some options. Stay with it, build an addition, or basically take it through you folks, get a negative recommendation.
Go under the RGFA.
Roll the dice with the board of appeal, roll with the three choices. But I'm also here from this board, don't come to us with a, you know, a bigger, bigger footprint, because we're going to give you a negative recommendation on taking down, taking down this house.
What's the RGFA of the proposed structure?
You got your 4890 or something, 4980.
That's the current house.
That's the one that was altered. Went from 50, whatever, it was 64.4.
Right, right. What's the current house's RGFA?
Total.
With the, with.
With the garage.
The garage, everything's on it as well.
35.
35, yeah.
And so the lot's 35.
No, it's RGFA's 35.
That's the RGFA of the current.
I'll be to see the lot.
The lot's a little over 40, not my range.
And it's, it's, so it's 60.
It's, it's, I mean.
It's a really difficult one.
It's difficult.
It's a difficult one.
There's no doubt.
If you, if, if you don't have the attached garage, that cuts down quite a bit. It's going to get you below with the tree.
I see. I don't know what the whole move.
Is it a two-story room? Is it upstairs to it?
It's a three-story.
But it's right against the neighbors. I mean, they should add on. I would think that.
It would come back in 10 years.
No, it would be bigger. We don't want to.
It wouldn't come back to us. Well, actually, they might.
Don't say that.
But you know, keeping that garage really is a detriment to one neighbor.
And I know. And you know, that may be absolutely true. And maybe if you have a new plan, it might come to pass that we would say to you, it needs revision.
He's in here. I'm actually there. And I didn't, I was coming here to look at plans for the first time, trying to understand the project. This is very interesting, actually. I didn't know that it was under 6,000 P E. We need to go over the plane in the morning. I guess that's a new.
No, it depends on the lot area.
Is that because, because I, when we did ours next door, we, we kept most of the footprint. We just went to the zoning board. So that's what I.
You would probably have had the trigger. Or, or it was an addition.
It was an addition, yeah.
That's unusual game.
But I will agree, moving the garage would be, would be a positive.
Right, right, absolutely. Everybody, you know.
And I think it'd be more, make it more usable for the days as well.
Right. And I think the septic, you know, we had approached so many times, you know, there's just so many other issues with that lot.
Well, a lot of times we modify things, you know, it might, it might come to pass if you use the same footprint and.
Add on a little bit.
And then we, you know, we make the case that, you know, we presented it both ways. You can see the impact this happened. They just briefly switch it to this side, you know, blah, blah, blah. We're not totally unreasonable.
Then they do. I, we just, now there's a flashlight for us.
Very sorry. It's funny, Al predicted this back when on South Avenue.
Thank you for the prediction. Last, last, uh, spruce.
That we would end up with some messy things until we finally get this all sorted out.
If you can give us your recommendations by email, by some sort of text or whatever. So we have some guidance as to which direction, but we have some requests from you. So that's one way. Maybe we can alter this, the present plan to make everybody happy. Maybe we're going to adjust the footprint more, but at least we have some guidance. That's what we need. The driveway bothers you?
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not even a driveway.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Well, this has been fun, huh? Funny evening for you guys. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care, Kim.
Oh, yeah, somebody should.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know. The question is, what are the dangers? It's what funny looks like. You can suggest it, but my guess is he's inexpensive, don't you think?
He's expensive.
Yeah. Really?
You didn't see that?
No, I didn't. Oh, yeah. Well, there goes that theory.